Start with the roll call, Larry.
Here.
Ross. Scott?
Here.
And Val?
Here.
And we have had a legal notice to replace us in Wakefield and also the Wakefield Publican. Bill of the meeting was to red- send Ross. It's decided, Ross.
Can I make a... ...a recommendation there?
Sure.
We move items four, five, and six to the end of the agenda.
So you're talking about having, and why do you want them at the end of the agenda?
Executive Jim session.
So you like the executive session at that time, or you will ask for an executive session? So I have to remove everything else out, and we have four, five, and six instead of... And then move up seven, move up eight, move up nine? Alright, we can do that. Okay, first item of this? Did you say something earlier?
No.
Okay. The first item of business is to open the public hearing on the purchase of vacant property. And this is the property on second, which here is not what we're talking about. So we will open the public hearing at this time. And first people to speak would be people in favor of the sale of that property. Anyone that wants to speak in that capacity? If not, then the second would be the people that are opposed to the purchase of that property by the city. The third group would be people that are ambivalent, don't really have strong feelings. Either way, but have some questions. Anybody to address under that third section? One thing that I like clarification on, the... The paper that I held that Gerald Trader given me, who's the chair of the plan of zoning, showed that there was a garage on the property? And that that was the assessor's document? And then there's also the tool shed, and I saw the tool shed, but I did not see a garage. And I'm just wondering why the assessor's included a single car garage that wasn't a... I mean, they were still collecting property taxes on the garage, it had been torn down, I don't know. Or it was an old...
Or it might have been added, they might have converted the garage to living. I don't know.
I don't think...
You don't think so?
There was a real, I would still call it a tool shed there on the east side of the house. If you could have got a car in it, it would be a Model A, you know?
Yeah, we found the tool shed, but we didn't find the garage, and that was the only question that I had.
I never seen one there.
And then Gerald was, I'm under the understanding that we couldn't put much, a much larger home on there than what was existing? And that was 780 square feet, something like that. But Theresa said that we could get a home as large as the home that was the work, the first workabout housing home built in Wakefield, I don't know if it's here, we haven't necessarily one that you remember. So either Gerald has maybe misinformation, or...
Or I do.
I don't know, Theresa.
This lot is different size, they're the same square feet, they're just the different dimensions. The one down there is fifty by hundred and fifty. The shopkeep property is seventy-five by hundred. So the setbacks from the front of the house are twenty-five feet. Where the street side of the house are fifteen. On the back is twenty-five feet, and the side yard is either five or ten. You still get a fifty by fifty structure.
So Gerald was talking about the setbacks and things, and he may have been, he may have been missing four of those setbacks. He was trying to read those off the guidelines that he had. But anyway, we will, we will leave the public hearing open for a while. And... Do we have to close it right now, or do...
Well, you have to close it in order to pass the number three.
Okay. How about if we go to number seven then? And approve appointments to planning commission in Treeboard? Dan rounds that he would serve with the planning commission? And he can serve even though he's not a resident in the community presently, but he lives in the area that allows him to be in the planning zone. And the zoning there is going to involve him, I think, so I think he'd be a good representative. And he's very concerned about the water issues with Logan and the lab in with the drainage problems coming from the property that is owned by Lawrence and Reddickx and Michael Spoons. And the city also, there is some of our water that goes, that drains out of Wake. And we are, Jim, we are in the process of trying to get a funding source to study that, or if we're going to be, it is...
Well, the district said that they had to do that income survey, so we'll have to wait and see.
But that's what we plan to do, is have the Northeast...
Correct.
Nebraska group, provide a grant for, for wastewater, floodwater, I guess. And...
Draining study, yep.
Draining study, like we were talking about, there are several communities that got those last year, and we have a chance to get one. So at this time, I would, well, yes, I can talk about the Treeboard. I did call Chris Solomon, who has been interested in trees, I think, for a long time. She likes to garden and things, and she said that she would serve the Treeboard and fill that vacancy. So those are the two appointments. Dan rounds for planning and zoning, and Chris Solomon for the Treeboard.
And that could be approved with our motion.
And if we can have a motion to approve those, or if you have any discussion about Chris and Dan or the committees?
I'm moving to approve the two appointments to the planning commission and Treeboard. Dan rounds and Chris Solomon.
Ross?
Hi.
And Scott?
Hi.
And Val?
Hi.
And Larry?
Hi.
And you. And number eight is the BREP proposals, and Jim has had those two or three different... What needs to go about this that I, and I'm sure he's got some information that he knows this time?
Well... Big Rivers had sent out the letter.
Right.
That I forwarded to you, so they, they had made three proposals to us. So I'm assuming you guys looked at that and read it. It appears to me that option or proposal number two is probably the most favorable aim that we wanted to do. Unless you have other recommendations, or would you think about, you know, proposal three? Or even the buyouts? You know, I don't...
Those... I had a question, so proposal three, additional nineteen thousand, some of the costs would be added to each of the remaining sixty-nine invoices. What do you exactly mean by that?
So they, they are going to take the money due them with this evidently a weighted average cost, long-term debt, and take that times the sixty-nine invoices as part of contract. That is worth about one point three million dollars. And my numbers come up to about a hundred and seventy-seven thousand dollars in interest in five point seven five years.
Can you repeat those numbers again, Jim?
One point three six two. And that's in the million dollars. That's the amount you would pay if you agree to pay that, those sixty million payments. And it's a hundred and seventy-seven, four hundred and sixty thousand dollars in interest that you would pay over that period of time.
So this would be eight of the savings that we've had with Big River as opposed to Nebraska Public Power. But my question is, how do the communities that have Nebraska Public Power come out of this?
Have no idea, Paul, none. They have been pretty mung on that, you know, they're... They're essentially their own entity, they're, they have their own governing body. So I don't know if we'll ever know if they had to pay a high fee, or whether they made money. I know one thing for a fact that during that period of time of thirteen through nineteen, since I was online every morning with them because they were talking about the rolling blackouts, that they were generating past their capacity. So what that tells me is they were selling power somewhere else. I don't know if we will ever know that information.
So I guess that makes a question, shall we leave Big River, go, try to go back to Nebraska Public Power?
No. You've got a contract to deal with there, so... So I think that's what they're telling you in proposal number one, that you would want to terminate your contract by the end of the year, and you agree to pay out those two figures.
About three and a half million.
About three and a half million dollars to get out of contract, so...
So maybe the Big River thing wasn't such a good deal after all?
Well, I don't know if we could ever say that. Last year, we had a savings of two hundred and seventy-seven thousand dollars. The year before was just a little under two hundred and twenty-five. So we were almost a half a million dollars in two years savings, so unfortunately, you know, I counted up. I think there was at least fifteen other communities, and they named them, as I was talking to Senator Bracken about. You know, they were literally asking and looking to lobby the legislature for funding for some of the communities. They got some gas money, or natural gas high bills, and they were working on some of the municipal power bills. And he had shared that there's about seventeen or eighteen other communities that are in the same predicament we are, if not more, so...
But they're not with Big River, right?
Wayne and us in Northeast.
And Sausu?
Sausu is not with Big Rivers, they're out of, out of Iowa, they're a group out of Iowa.
So we don't have an antecision tonight, right?
You don't, but I think... It would be good to have something a little bit, to narrow down a little bit. If you think proposals number two, then the next question is, of that one point one million dollars that they're asking us to pay, do you want to pay, do you want to recover that much money, or a certain percentage of it? And if you do, we already have a number that we could start with. I can go back to the rate people and say, propose this, what some rate increases would be if we took this on as a, yeah.
For resources, for money, we're still anticipating something from the federal government for the rescue program, right? For the COVID program?
Water, sewer, broadband focus. Yep.
So we're anticipating, like, what do we think we possibly receive?
Two twenty.
Two twenty, two hundred and twenty thousand.
Two hundred and twenty thousand, anticipating?
Yep.
And when are we expecting maybe that? You haven't heard anything new?
No. But that can't be extended on this, right?
No, water, sewer, broadband.
Well, it sounds like the governor's giving money for the broadband. I mean, a lot of, the state is being, discussing the legislature for broadband, so I don't think there's any need for us to go and put anything in broadband. So that would leave water and sewer. But you know, if you take five hundred customers that we have, you're talking over a billion dollars. If you would give each of those customers a thousand dollar surcharge, that'd give you a half a million. And... I mean, it's a huge amount, I mean...
Well, I, my proposal would never be to try to recover at any one time. You're going to have to look at a two to three-year recovery and spread it out per month to the individuals based on their use.
Based on use?
Yep.
And the city would probably put... Do you think the city would put some of the money before that, before we try to recover that? Or you just, you think that when it's time to recover, it's all of it?
We're going to have to pay it, right?
You need to pay the bill.
We have to pay it, but that's...
You have to pay the bill, but I think Scotty is asking...
Is it coming from our part?
How much, how much of that?
How much is coming from the city?
How much of that one point one do you want to recover?
Right.
Want to recover half of it, you want to recover all of it?
I would, personally, I don't think, I think we should put in for some of it. I don't think we can do all of it at the city, if to do...
Put in something.
Yes.
I think, that's what I would think. The scary thing is what's going to keep this happening yet? Could happen again next year.
Well, Big Rivers had given us some, some other things to look at and to consider. And if you read, read through those proposals, there's what they call this delivery point. That's what they said caused the issue, was a point of delivery. Now, they said, and Northeast and Wayne has already agreed that that's one of the first things they want to see done, is that delivery point moved from that vice of NPPD to NPPDBRPS load one. That's a different location where that gets done. I mean, this is what the vice president from Big Rivers told them. He says that puts all responsibility on them. Takes all the other responsibility off of Wayne, Wakefield, and Northeast. Why didn't we do that sooner? I have no idea. We thought this was the right thing to do.
Well, we better do that post haste.
Scott, back to your proposal, you think fifty percent recover, and then spread it out over a period of a year?
I think a lot just depends on what is the cost per customer? Per customer, and per month for the customer.
Even if I had a number that you would say, hey, let's, let's cut it in half and try to recover what? Five hundred and fifty thousand? We can, we can put a rate together, and I had Nikki do it last time, when she was, when we were looking at the whole thing. We're looking at recovering the whole thing. And I think, I don't know, how many did you do, seven or eight, or?
Almost.
Remember?
Close to seven hundred.
I'm not asking you to remember what those numbers were, but we went through and took residential people, a customer, and others, and said, here's what it would look like per month.
Yeah, north and west, right?
It was pretty reasonable. We can do that again if you just give us some numbers to play with. Nothing that we're going to stick to right now, but if you're somewhat...
You want to look at like fifty percent, seventy-five percent, to see what the difference is between them? Let's do two of those. I mean, recover fifty percent, or recover seventy-five percent, to see what the difference is?
Okay. Can we do that two years and twenty years as well?
Sure.
Just to see what it would look like if we...
We can do anything you want to do. You want to look at two or four, or two or three, or?
Two and four.
Two and four.
So my question is, then, the city will borrow what we need to borrow to pay this off? And we have to pay it back? We may have, do we have it, how does this?
It's in the budget for the equipment procurement for water, so that's probably the one, so we're liking that the money's in there, the electric fund.
Okay.
So we do have some, some funds there, basically?
Yes.
We don't have to rob Peter?
No.
Okay.
We had planned on paying ahead on some of the equipment, but...
If we get you in that regard, it's probably off. Better than most, or a lot of other municipal that we have in mind. So we're going to take a loan, or do the financing option, or pay extra every single month for five years.
So then, then our internal plan would be to, to make exact track the additional costs that we're adding on if we go that route? Whatever else we've added on to the electric bill to help pay this off? And then put it back in the sinking fund, whatever you want to call it?
Yeah, you're just...
Nikki had a, not a rate, what was it, something that would drop off automatically?
Yeah, it's part of production credit adjustment?
Adjustment.
Yeah.
And it just drops off, so we're not charging ourselves for...
You're charged until you recover.
Okay.
NPPD was notorious about doing that, and even WAPA had done that over the years, as they added a PCA or whatever, if they had a large expense that they couldn't cover, then everybody paid for it. When that dropped off, the PCA drops off. And that's kind of the same process, I think, would be best.
So...
Heck, you pass the PCA, whatever that number is, for length of time, and when we recover the money, what we want, we stop doing it.
Okay.
And it goes away.
So then, to the customer. But then the money that we've been bringing in, help us pay this back, does that get shuffled to another account? I don't want it to get lost in a pot.
Yeah, it goes back to the, to the electric revenue, yep. Because that's what we're taking it out of, to pay the bill.
So we could have a plan then to put a certain percentage back in each month, as so...
Oh, and if it comes back, it's going to go right into that.
It'll all come back in, right?
It'll all go back in, right?
Okay. So the whole other thing is just budgeted, and that's just, okay. Okay, I got it. It's not real money, it's just...
Well, the, the other thing to remember, this will be a new budget year, you know, soon, but we're going to pay the bill in June, so... And I think, I think we're okay, because again, we had planned on taking that money from the electric fund and putting it up against some expenses in the water fund, therefore, it's essentially in the budget.
Was Northeast Public Power hit just as hard as we were?
Ten times.
The discussion to go with Weaver and Nebraska Public Power and go with Big River was really started by the Northeast Public Power president, who is retired now, what was his name?
Mark Schultz.
Mark Schultz, and he, he was, Schultz was, and Lowell was, Johnson was administrator at Wayne, and he was agreeing with him and thought Wakefield... I thought Sausu was in the initials discussions, and maybe Santee, or one Vega, or Macy, or somebody else, but...
That's Walt Hill and Sausu were all part of it, yep.
And we've saved a half a million dollars, and now we've lost a million plus, we're over half a million dollars behind. And I think it's imperative that we do a lane in Northeast of that, as far as the source. But then they could also have to study a little bit, because from the information that I've received, the reason for the lack of electricity was because in the South, especially in the state of Texas, they were underprepared. They had frozen lines and above ground connections that are frozen, according to the reports that I read, eighteen times in the last forty-two years. And they have taken no action. So they're not going to solve the problem, guys and ladies. They're going to just keep doing what they're doing. And if we have pulled weather like that again, and they have taken the action, we're going to be sitting there in their sights again for a million dollar bill, and I think it's a bad position to be in. I think we need to make sure that the, if we can eliminate our liability for this by changing the sources of the connecting point. We need to do that immediately. And somebody needs to tell those folks in Texas that they can get their act together. But it's unfortunate that we're going to lose half a million dollars of our budget for this.
Jim, what does it mean when it says the basis differential provisions will be eliminated?
Where is that?
I'm looking at proposals, that is the number three item, and the proposals, the three proposals, both number two and three have as number three. And unless, basis differential provisions will be eliminated, and that's great to me. Is that a good thing, a bad thing?
Yes. How can I explain it? I don't know if I can.
Is it a positive thing or a bad thing?
It'll be a good thing. The other thing is, end of the year, we'll be done with NPPD, and we'll be on Big Rivers for a larger amount, which means should be a larger savings, so... Hopefully, we can recover that money, you know, in the...
Sure, three years.
In the amount of time that we are recovering from the customers too, so...
So like, number three and number four, are each one a really a positive thing for the city?
I believe so.
Okay.
I was just counting, there was one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven, twelve, thirteen, fourteen. Fourteen towns, this is what I, the information I had turned in to Senator Bracken and Mayor working on legislation. I don't know where they're at, and if they need to get a hold of me, but there was fourteen communities.
Do you have a list of them, Jim?
Yeah, I do, and I'll make you guys a copy.
Okay.
Sausu and Wayne, Falls City, Nebraska City, Scrivener, Wahoo, Valentine, Hating, Tremont, Brandon, and Neely, Wakefield, Litchpole, Superior are the ones evidently that have contacted their senators and was saying, hey, you guys need to help solve some of the problems. So they were looking to come up with about a twelve million dollar fund to help assist in doing some of this all. We'll have to wait and see, I guess, where...
So there's still possibility for...
Maybe you can get some funding, don't expect them to come through and, and do anything. No more than I'm holding my breath, thinking the Fed's going to step in and go, a lot of things are done wrong, or there are some of these problems, but it's, it's yet to be determined what those guys are going to do.
So you guys kind of have the ones you want to pursue, you said three and four?
I, I...
Two. Two and four, or two? Two. Two and four, there is no...
I know four.
You're talking about proposal two.
Yes, yes, to recover the...
Alright, and then you were talking, two to four years, in either seventy-five or fifty percent.
Just to see what's over.
So those are something that we can look at and put some numbers together, and I think we can have some for you by the main meeting.
Has there been any talk legislatively to prevent a price gouging like this in the future? Or is this something potentially good happening?
I've never seen it in thirty-seven years I've been in city government like this, it's never happened. I know there's been some spikes in gas prices and other things, but...
I just wonder if there's anything being put in place, you know, to prevent this?
Well, what we always hoped was, when the Fed stepped in, I don't know, twenty-some years ago, and said there needs to be regulation within the United States, and they've made these four different power pools, you know? We're in the Southwest Power Pool, and that was their responsibility to manage that we didn't have these outages, brownouts, that somebody wasn't making excessive amounts of money on, on some of these things. And it's really frustrating, and I don't have an answer, but it's just unbelievable how it manifested itself. And it's really, uh, frustrating, I, I don't have an answer, but it's just unbelievable how it may manifested itself. It's, it's much bigger than what, where we're at, what we can do, bigger than the state, I think, is. It's, it's, it's another one, but we have to make the big changes, you know, though. That's a big hill to climb. Honestly, I don't know, all right, so we'll work on. We're looking at proposal number two, right, people?
Yeah.
So proposal number two.
Let me go on to number nine of this, well, the discussion, uh, and that's the Knight River bid to overlay the trail. And the trail overlay has been, um, something we looked at with the first section of trail, uh, for a couple of years. When I was in the street alley, maybe we went out and walked the park and the cemetery and, and the trail. And the representative from Knight, Knight River thought at that time the cemetery was, it had no need of repair. Uh, and the park was in need of repair. And if you don't repair it, then you have a chance to lose the base, he was saying. And he thought there were a couple of sections of trail that were in the same position as the park, that were in bad shape, the curves that, in the first section, you start making the two bins are the two, were the two most noticeable. And Jim had bids a year ago, I believe, Jim, for, um, and that included parking at the pool and the trail. And the parking at the pool, we took care of with a bid for concrete, we had Jason Stewart bid on it and Dirt Road Construction, Jeremy Cum. And we got the two bids back and Jeremy's was much more detailed, included a lot of rebar and a lot of other things. And Jason's was basically just the flat, uh, the square yards of concrete and was a little bit less than, uh, Jeremy's bid, so Jason did that. But it still came under, um, the twenty thousand that had been, or the, it was, I believe it was twenty thousand that they were gonna do with the Knight River. And I think we got that paid, Jim, was it seven or eight thousand, is that, like, between seven and eight thousand for, that Jeremy did that, I believe it was like seven thousand, not Jeremy, but Jason, seven thousand five hundred or something like that. We did get the two bins. And, uh, I don't know the, the quality of the job that we got, but we got that in. So we got that thirteen thousand dollars less, and the main reason it was less was because we then extended it up to the, uh, split rail fence. We felt like that could be returned to grass, there wasn't any need to park it all the way up to that fence, so that decreased the area by about half. But what was our bid at that time with Knight River, was it cheaper last year, Jim, with just the trailer, or was it?
The, uh, trail is, was, uh, forty-nine or forty-five thousand, nine fifteen. And, uh, I had them take the work for the parking lot, uh, lot off, which was roughly seventy-five hundred, so. Uh, your overall price was around fifty-three thousand.
But this is the new bid, I'm talking about the old bid that we had a year ago, because.
Yeah, your old bid was around fifty-three thousand.
It was a higher bid?
Yes.
But that included twenty thousand for the parking?
Seventy-five hundred. Seventy-five hundred was, uh, the, the amount of money that they had for, uh, the parking overlay. Yeah, just the parking lot overlay.
Where is, that's not up there, is it, or is it?
No, no, that's done, we took it off.
This is just for the trail?
Trail only.
From the bridge to the park?
Correct.
Yeah, you know, I, I have been out there for a while, but in the spring, it always looks worse than it does now because it's, in the spring, it bubbles up. And that, when you go around Larry Shear's curb there, it's really bad there. But I would like to see another bid, uh, just, you know, for comparison. And see where we go, is Knight River, do they have to have this done by June or something, or is that just a ten and day date they shot at this?
That's their schedule, it's by the first of June, they thought.
So maybe we think possibly get another bid in the next two weeks before our May meeting and.
I don't know who's. Who would be the contractor to do that, Larry?
Well, this morning, I'm in TV, on, on the news this morning, there was a company, I see city, uh, advertising, starts with an S, I can't remember the name, I should have written it down. I don't remember, but it does, uh, you know, it's advertised on TV. Asphalt.
Jim, were you surfacing a big company or something?
Yeah, well, yeah. The TV ad and the company and the trucks and the streets and.
Some of you. There's a lot of some of you, I think.
Yeah.
That would be my recommendation, we tried to give another bid and.
You think that squeezes too tight, Jim, or do you have time to go out trying to get another bid? Depends how quick they get back to us, I suppose.
Yeah, it does, and whatever. This puts, uh, I'm trying to see if there's a quote date, it's, doesn't say.
Yeah, it's a quote date of four twenty-two.
Yeah, but it doesn't say there's.
When it expires.
Expires, so, yeah, let's see what we can come up with.
Yep, can we get on that and, and try and get, we've contacted, if they get, they'll get back to us, we know we, we tried. That's my opinion.
Yeah, I mean, I think it needs to be done in materials, and I, I would say almost dangerous in some spots, if you're riding a bike or something like that.
It is rough.
Um, it is rough, but I don't see a problem of coming up with a second bid as long as we can do a timing here.
Is the cemetery being looked at too, Jim, or not?
We had, the cemetery board did request, uh, to do that.
That was in good shape the last time we checked, I haven't checked it for a while.
It's a lot better than the trail.
It'll get the traffic there, but the trail, I think, is just, that was the initial trail, isn't it?
Yeah, that was done in, two thousand, somewhere like that, so it's, uh.
Been twenty years.
Twenty years, held up well.
Hey, I got a question on the trail here, that pipe that goes up over for Larry Shear's water line, can we get that taken down?
He had a hose that was, that ran up over the top of the trail there.
Sure.
Because it is an issue if we ever have to run a rescue unit out there. With a new one, the old one was fine.
Well, you want the whole thing down.
With the rescue unit, the old rescue unit would go through the, uh, holes. And it would go underneath the, the loop, but that, we, we need to get our new one out there to see if it'll go through the holes. So we'll do that in the next few days, but that, that loop, I know with our new one is, oh, and the stuff will bang on it, we're gonna lose on it, because he's not using it anymore.
No, he's got a wood frame, uh, just looks like a gate, the, the, the hose went up over the path.
Can you just measure it and, uh, drive on it, be up trail?
Probably never drive on it, you know, that's, it was some kind of a, we probably measured the thing up in the Pierce Center field to get under the arm.
Is the arm too?
Looked at that.
She's got banged up, let's put it that way.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So I, I would rather see if I sight.
And then are you gonna, are they gonna do that little loop that didn't get done when they did the park, the, goes by the park restroom and, uh? That was one that was, historically speaking, I can go back fifty years, I'll go back twenty years or ten. But when Dan Lopowski was here, which at that point, twenty years ago, he promised that he was gonna put a curb from the pool, the parking at the pool is on the west side of the pool. And that curb stopped right there. And Grace Parker ever raised money, by the way, that's not tax dollars, it's not sales tax dollars, it's individuals opening up their bill holes and putting money into it. But we did put that curb in all the way down, and we built a retaining wall. And then we built another retaining wall and we paid for half, like the city paid for half. But anyway, the promise was that in front of those retaining walls, we weren't gonna have crushed, we put crushed brick in, or crushed rock in, temporary, that was a temporary solution until we overlaid it the next time, but when they came with the overlay, they didn't overlay where that white rock is. And there's three things with the white rock. Well, number, there's four things, number one is that section, why that section was skipped, I don't know. But it didn't get overlaid like it's been overlaid every other year. But the white rock is on a slope a lot of it, it washes down onto the street, cars go over it, break it up, and it's a mess. It also grows a good, good growth of weeds in there, so if you like weeds in your park, then you can leave it, but otherwise, we should, I think, keep the promise that was made, that when we put the retaining walls up and it was backfilled with white rock, that now is the time to overlay. And the wall, the curb did not cost you a dime as the city represented, the retaining walls did not cost you a dime as a city represented. It was all done with money that was fundraised. And I think it was to be done, if, this was on the one-year street program for two years. Normally, when something's in the one-year street program, it gets done, in my thirteen years of the council, if it's on the one-year street program, it's always been done with the exception of the park was not overlaid and was on the one-year street program for two years. The third year wasn't even on the one and sixth, until I pointed it out. Well, then we overlaid the park finally, but two years late and we didn't do, we left one section out.
Do we have to move the white rock out of there, Paul, before they do that? That has to be done.
Yeah, it'd have to be dug up and throw some asphalt in there, would it be better to? You know, if we've looked at it, I've seen it, two years, Val and I have looked at it and said we're gonna take care of it, because it's dirty and would it be cheaper and easier for us to dig out that white rock and throw some concrete in there?
If it'd be concrete, it'd look better, probably was overlaid, but we talked about they were ready to do that, it wasn't gonna be on the bend, it wouldn't be very much money, but now it's not even included, but.
We need to clean it up, I, I agree, Val, you, we've looked at it for two years, we've said, you know, we do it, I think we need to look at it one way or the other, either get it cemented out and get it flushed, so we get rid of that white rock or see what it costs to throw some asphalt in there. And check out that road that goes up around that, you know, that got missed too, you know, we talked about that. You know, that road that goes up by the restroom, you know, that was never resurfaced back then.
What shape is it?
I don't know.
The now mill section is in bad shape, the, the sloping section is in bad shape where the white rock.
I'm talking about those two retaining walls that curb kind of won't go.
Yeah, where you sit there and take dig it sometimes, you know, and then the, the, the road that goes up by the restroom, you know, we skip that. I think we need to revisit that and see if, if that would be an option, if it needs to be done, maybe we'd be better off to go all asphalt, but if that really don't need to be done, you know, we get going concrete, that's just my opinion, but it needs to be one way or the other, we need to get that white rock out of there. But I've seen it for two years and said we're gonna do something, so. Does everybody know where that white rock's at?
And one other additional comment is the street sweeper normally goes to where the handicap parking is by the medicage is. And normally the, I mean, I, I hate to say it, bud, from the park gate down to the dumpsters, I usually clean that once a week with a leaf blower. And it takes a lot of time and the hardest thing to get out of there is the white rock that washes up, I mean, washes up on the street. But that's like what they had, the Little Red Hen Theater had their presentation on there, I, I cleaned the whole thing. And, uh, not that, nearly a rug with that, using a leaf blower, small leaf blower as opposed to the street sweeper, but, um, it, it is a little bit difficult to keep it clean, and if you wanna have a nice park, that's kind of a thing that has to happen. Anyway, we're gonna postpone that, we're gonna get a second bid, right? Okay, is that all right with everybody?
Yeah.
Uh, we can close the public hearing now and passage of resolution to purchase of two oh three mixture street, I think we discussed this previously.
I just have a few things to add.
Before we close the public?
Or, no, you can close the public.
I just didn't keep it open, but if you got comments about that lot?
Okay, I, I have comments about the lot.
Okay.
Okay, I, I just want some information, so we buy the lot, who's gonna be the responsible party for the lot? Sales tax?
City will be.
So it'll be the city, Wakefield?
Yeah.
Yeah. I would assume, right, Jim?
Right, so there, okay, no C R A money used for demo or?
Can't, can't use it now, right?
Okay, has there been any cost on possibly what the demo cost would be for that place or asbestos removal?
Nothing yet, till we didn't own the house, we can't do it either.
Okay, how about the, uh, utilities, where does the utility go from that residence? Uh, the sewer, where's that go from that house, where's it go to the city yet, yeah? I think it goes through Peters's property.
And the cement, it has to go to the alley.
Yeah, so it's, it's cutting through her property, correct, probably? We have to check that.
I think back in the day, they put two, they would put.
We don't, those are private sewers, we don't match private sewers.
Okay, so that, that's a possibility, we don't know where the sewer goes? Okay.
But Jim, they would have one line, and if both, both of those homes went up to the same line, right?
The one in, that one and the one next to it to the east, you mean?
Behind it, yeah.
Didn't a lot of those houses that, that got like two and a half, like, there's several places where they got an extra lot in there, and I thought they shared that sewer, did they have it, but maybe I'm wrong.
They might have, but I, and I don't, we don't have any records, so.
You don't know if they have it or not?
Nope.
Okay, so that, that is an unanswered question, we don't know where the sewer goes.
Well, it has to go to the alley, however it gets there, I don't know.
Yeah, okay, so, so we don't know about the sewer, how about the water, where do we get water to that house, does that come from the west side or from Joe Trater's street?
I believe the water stop is on the west side of the house, so yes, it'll go across the street.
Okay.
And that's, the water stop's still there?
Yeah, yeah.
Have you checked that already, Jim?
I believe the boys shut it off when they found out they had a water leak.
Okay.
Okay, so if the sewer does go through Marion Peters's old property, what kind of arrangement do you have to do if you have to put a new sewer in there?
I'm assuming they got an Eastman somewhere.
We'd have to check the records to see. But if they're gonna put a new line in, they'd need a different arrangement with Joe Crone's Peters property.
Right.
But there was an Eastman for sewer, was there a leak, or have you checked that?
No, I haven't checked that, so.
Okay.
Okay, those, those are just some of the concerns that I have before this, you know, the sale of the lot, but that's just my concerns, there, there was things that should have been checked out. That's just my concerns, there, there was things that should have been checked out before the sewer.
Well, the water is just like any, any place you build a new home, the water problem, the sewer might be more of an issue because it may connect with another one, or you'd have to have an easement allowing your line to go across. But I wouldn't think it would be hard to get an easement.
Okay.
No, it shouldn't.
Shouldn't be anyway, did you think, Lee?
No.
Nope.
Anything else, Larry?
No, thanks.
Okay, we'll close the public hearing, um, and then we're ready to take action on approving.
We need a motion to close it.
Oh, we need a motion to close public hearing.
I move to close public hearing.
Sorry.
Okay, and I believe it's Scott, your attorney.
Hi.
And Larry?
Hi.
And Ross? Okay. And the next thing we have to do is pass, introduce and move the pass of the resolution.
Right.
Uh, six twenty twenty-one to approve the purchase of two oh three mixture property.
We approve the passage of resolution six dash twenty-one to approve the two oh three mixture.
Okay. Do I have to read this now or wait till we get?
You don't have to.
No? I don't? Good. We need a second for our.
One second.
Okay, we got a motion, a second. Any discussion? Val?
Hi.
Larry?
May.
Russ?
Hi.
And who am I leaving out, Scott?
Hi.
All right, so motion created, uh, three to one. Now we're back. Is, is that taken or everything, Lee?
No, you got number ten.
Oh, you got to do number ten, help me. Yeah.
Start funding Hopkins Memorial Street.
And we, you got your email from Jim, thank you guys, on the meeting, possible meeting date and, uh, before the June meeting, the bid's open, Jim, on the fifth?
Fifth of May, yes.
At one thirty again?
Yeah. Yeah, and that's what I sent out, uh, from Craig is that bottom paragraph, give some good times to, uh, to meet, whether you would like to meet, uh, before the June council meeting or the day of, but maybe earlier, so you have some time to to throw that around and discuss it. But I had Zach put that on there, I got a phone call from the director of the SRF Water Fund, and we talked for about thirty-five minutes. And I thought he was gonna tell me some bad news, but he really didn't. Because I had emailed him and I had told him that the council had voted in pass, uh, to take the SRF loan. And I asked him if he needed anything, uh, from us to, to verify the minutes of the council or something. He, he said no, but he said, I want to inform you that the Biden administration is looking at another funding coming around, and he said it could be very attractive to us. And he didn't have any specifics to talk about. Uh, but he said it, here's the deal, he said, right now you're locked in and the contract, zero percent interest, twenty percent of forgiveness, we're good on that. Good, good, and if you're happy with that, or happy, or you say is yes, don't worry about it. But he said there could be a potential that he could get something better if he passes another stimulus package for the infrastructure. Was it, was going to get, he said there could be more forgiveness or not. So he said, here's the deal, we can wait and see. Craig tells me we have about three months between the time when we get these bids that we'll have to come up and probably start paying for equipment. So if you want to wait and see if a different stimulus package comes, it's totally up to you. If it comes and it's, uh, there's icing on the cake and candles and everything, and you want to do something more, we can do it. But once you take and spend money from this loan on this project, you seal the deal.
Could stall the project.
It could get better, it could be the same, we don't know.
What were they talking about, the, the infrastructure packages? I mean, it's gonna pass the House, but likely, but the Senate's gonna be a hard sell, it's fifty-fifty in the Senate. But when are they gonna, he's gonna introduce that? Has he introduced it already in the House, or what's the status of it?
I don't, I don't know, but he just said if you want to wait and see, he said it doesn't hurt, but he said that's the option, that's what everybody's telling them is there could be.
I don't think there's a lot of opposition to the infrastructure, I think the opposition is higher than paper. Where's money gonna come from? But, yeah, it might be worth waiting for a while anyway, I mean.
So I'm just throwing that out, and, and if you want to wait, you know, uh, Craig will be here on the fifth of May, talk to him, he knows a little bit about it as well. But there's no specifics that, that we can put a finger on to say, this is a better deal or it's not, so.
But we're, you go with the delay, we're not gonna lose what we have already.
No, we're locked in, so.
I'd be surprised if I can get through Congress on three plus.
I, I, I agree a hundred percent, so.
We'll see, but it's worth a try, right?
Right, that's what I have on that.
Put my hands up and say we, we have.
Yeah.
Okay.
And that's money for electricity.
Yeah, we got that. Then we're down to, if I read this right, number four, five, and six, and then the chairman, but so we've got, number four is to extend Jim's contract. And then to review and discuss responsibilities of employees and staff. And then review and discuss salaries of employees and staff.
I make a motion of going to executive session to discuss.
I don't think we have a reason to do that, Larry.
Uh, first of all.
Personnel?
Personnel.
You have to notice who they are, and they, if they don't want an executive session, then you can't go. I mean, who do you want to talk about?
It's just an overview of the job descriptions, the study goes, to give an opinion. It's nothing about, bad about anything, it's just an overview of what we need to possibly be working with in the new parties.
I don't think that's a valid reason to go.
We want to have a discussion with Zach or Nick or Jim or anyone else.
No, no, it's, it's just an overview of employees, of what to do. It's no one-on-one, no nothing.
Well, the, the first item is Jim is retiring either when his contract is up, which I believe is August, Jim, did you say?
Right.
Or we're talking about a possible extension to December. And we'd like to get that action done tonight. The review and discuss responsibilities of employees and staff, that simply is trying to prepare, and that was kind of the reason for a special meeting, because we had more time to discuss the skill sets of employees that we have now. And their interests may be, I mean, talking about what, how you feel Jim's position. And I think, I know for a fact that when Dan Zokowski took the job, I believe he was the only one that was interested, if I'm, I might be wrong, but I don't think so. And when, when Dad left, our city was, we had some issues, and Jim came in and cleaned up a lot of the issues. And now Jim is going to retire, I know I talked to some council members just in conversation about, you know, are we gonna find, are we gonna be lucky enough to find someone? And I know in talking to Ross, he thought we need, we probably need to advertise the position and see what the response is, see if you have anyone, see if you have a qualified person. And talking to Larry, he thought we needed to advertise the position. So that's kind of the purpose here, is to look at the employees that we have right now. And seeing if they could fulfill some of these duties, especially, uh, short-term and maybe long-term. And then also try to figure out when we need to start advertising for the position. What has to be done tonight is we have to, uh, get Jim's contract decided here. And if we don't do it before May first, does that automatically?
May fourth.
May fourth, it automatically?
Rolls over for a two-year term.
For a two-year term. And Jim doesn't want that, um. But I know Larry was interested in getting a copy of the contract.
I got one.
Today, today, Lee, I've been asking for one for two days, and I got split off, so.
And I think we should have a copy, we should have a copy in City Hall, I think. And I think the council members should have a copy of the contract, just sort of differently with it. And that's not, we've never, I've never, I've been on the council thirteen years, I've never seen contracts. And I think that's probably something that we should see if we're trying to be responsible. But the problem we've got is there's a timeframe here where we need to, we need to get this done, like, before May fourth. So that was the reason for the meeting tonight. And I would think we could discuss a position in executive session.
I make a motion we go into executive session.
I'm getting advised against it, I want that on the record, Larry, you don't have a reason to go into.
But it says at the bottom, every time we have one of these closed sessions, maybe necessary to protect your public interest.
Who in the public are you trying to protect?
So we can just talk about it in an open session?
Yes.
Okay, so we don't, we need to make copies of that, so everybody has a copy of the.
Unless Jim doesn't want it in, you know, a private session.
So you are saying that we cannot go into executive session, Lee, I want that in law.
I'm advising, you, you can only go in for specific reasons, Larry, as listed.
The school board often goes in executive session.
No, that may not always be right either, you know.
They do it often, and the county, how is that, they, they're settled unless they're talking about personnel.
Now, if you, if you were talking about a specific individual, and you, you know, your prevention of needless injury, the reputation of someone, okay, you got a legitimate reason to do it. But you're just talking, as I understand it, about, you know, what, how do you want to proceed in the future without, do you want a city administrator, do you not want a city administrator?
Well, we like to have a city administrator, but there are few and far between.
So, I mean, there's nothing.
And Jim's taking.
Serious about that.
A lot of responsibilities that a lot of city administrators won't be able to take. For example, the electrical is gonna be an issue with us. Because he's covered that for us, especially emergency electrical, is that right, Jim?
True.
So there's a lot of discussion that has to take place. And I know that Larry has been working and trying to prepare. And I think, Val, I don't know, you got the, you got all of the different.
Let me just say this, Paul.
Job descriptions?
Saying you cannot go in, I'm saying as a legal advisor, I don't think the reason is there to do it. You can still do it, um, but if later it's determined that is improper, there are penalties, you can be penalized for that. And so.
What, what if, I, I don't know, what if penalties?
Well, I haven't looked at, but, yeah, you can be charged.
I mean, if we're buying into executive session and we're talking about contract renewal, do you anticipate having any discussion regarding any other employees or maybe names, or discussing anyone's personal character or anything like that?
No, no character, no, it's just kind of where we want to go as a council, what, what, what we're thinking, how we're gonna feel the void when Jim leaves.
And why isn't that a legitimate reason to, to discuss an open session?
Well, it's kind of like, well, I, you know, we have the retreat, and I can remember the retreats that we've been on, we, we had a retreat that Jim held for us. And it was about, uh, trying to get the council to see the benefits of tax incentive financing. And it goes on and on and on, it can last for two hours, you have a speaker, you have, um, and the next time we had another one was when they talked about the value of economic development director. And that went on, we had a special committee, and maybe that's what we get here, is a special committee. But we had a special committee, I think Ross was on it and I was on it, and we met several times talking about how we would set that up, and I'm not sure we got anything right or everything right, but I know we did put the time in to try to get something that was going to work. And this is something that I think the council, at least, what I get from the council, especially from Val and Larry, is that we need to spend a reasonable amount of time to make sure that we go over the different responsibilities of our workers, see where their strengths are, what they've, what they've been able to do in the past, what maybe they could possibly do that Jim now does. And then see, you know, look at this contract because that Jim has, and make some changes in it. I think anyone that would look at a, somebody retiring after as many years as Jim's been on the job, you probably would look and see if there's some changes that he can make. So that's the purpose of tonight's, the main focus of tonight's meeting, that's why we're having a special meeting.
Here's another option, Paul, if May fourth is the deadline, the council could vote to, to give him notice that you're terminating his contract. It's not effective until August fourth. So you can negotiate, if you want to read his contract and come back before, of course, that, you know, is that part of Jim. That's, you know, maybe it isn't, because he'd like to know, you know, what's ahead for him, but that would buy you some more time.
Well, we'd like Jim to know what, you know, between August and December, we'd like to have Jim have spent with us what he wants to do during that period of time. We talked about it real quickly, about maybe helping train new people, maybe trying to get information, uh, so that only, you know, there's some information that only he has, I, I think, as far as some of the, especially electrical, I think, and, and make sure we have records of all of that.
And, and processes, things that, that you just do automatically, that nobody else really realizes what you do or how it's done. And for me, it's a real hard, the council thing is a hard thing, because I never get to sit and talk to Scotty about concerns I have, to just share back and forth, or Ross, because they're both busy, they're both in, in different worlds than I am, and it, that's hard for me. And I don't think that we can come to, um, legitimate cohesive discussions unless we all talk together. And it's, and it's not a talk that says, oh, well, you know, I saw Nikki sitting in our office the other day texting because her daughter was hurt. No, it's not that kind of stuff, that isn't, that isn't anything that we would consider. It, it has to do with the good of the community and what we can do with the limited amount of funds we have. We're gonna be asking folks for more money again, um, we're gonna have to start looking at stuff. And I don't like meeting more than anybody else does all the time, but I, I think, I think we're gonna have to start being a little bit conservative. And that's the kind of stuff I think we may need to discuss, but it's also not something that I want to throw all the employees into a tizzy over. You know, I, I can't see us jerking away money, I can't, I can't see any of that out of it. But we are gonna have to look at some stuff and decide what we can do moving forward.
And, and as a mayor, I have talked, not, I mean, basically office talk, but I've, I've talked to Nikki and Zach and seeing if there's a possibility they could cover a lot of the things that Jim does now. But I think that it's probably time that they start getting some work with Jim, so they kind of know the nuts and bolts of all that stuff, even if they are not going to become administrator, or if they're not going to assume more administrative responsibilities, they at least, I think, would benefit from conversations as far as training right now. And, um, there's a lot you can learn. I know I've learned a lot in thirteen years. It's a lot more difficult running the city than what I thought it was when I started in the council. But I think the intention is that we can have some good conversations, and I think we would all benefit from that, and I think the city would benefit from it.
While we're on that, I appreciate the fact. While we're on that, I appreciate the fact, you know, we sent out the earlier job descriptions, I sent those to the council and Nikki, I think, talked to the staff and has, the things that are online now are different, slightly different, some of them, than what I sent out. So be sure and look and see what changes have been made, you know, they're a lot, they're a lot fresher and more realistic, I think, now. So those things are there and we need to go over them, you know. In an ideal world, we take a Saturday and we'd say, Nikki, come in and talk to us for a half hour, you know. What do you think? What do you think about your job? What do you think you could do? What do you hate? What do we need to pass on to some another? Ideally, we do that with everybody. To me, that's still, it should be done, but I don't know if it can be. When, when we can't even just sit as a council mayor and chat without.
Without having issues.
Yeah.
And worried about something else. So are we going into the executive session or not?
I've got one more thing to say before we talk about that, Larry. It's just like, in all of these job descriptions, there are things that are kind of outdated, like, and there are things that are in here that we don't do. For example, under administrative coordinator, Nikki's position, it says that Assistant Administrator Public Works Director with Budget Preparations for Administration and with Human Resource Management. And in all the budget meetings that I've had, we've never had Nikki there, which it would probably be beneficial if she was there. But do you still work with Jim on the budget preparation or not, Nikki?
Uh, we do it together in the office. A lot of times I usually just focus on CRA, sales tax, and office expenses.
And then also under yours, it's produce a monthly community newsletter, develop community, community program, on access channel twenty-four. But I think there's a lot of that stuff that we don't need to discuss at the council meeting.
And, and if you go to what, what's on here, those things are listed there, Paul. Nikki did, Nikki did one herself. She, she listed the jobs and the things she does and then another column says when, how much time it takes, that kind of stuff. So those are the.
Where did you get that? I don't have that.
It was, it was on here. You have to print it off.
I just got.
Your computer, Paul.
I just got it dropped off.
Um, yeah, and, and that's what I'm saying. The new things are slightly different. Zach, you did it a different way. He took um both the treasurer and the assistant city clerk, right? Is that what we call you? See, I don't know the titles, I just know it. But he put down his duties and he grouped them into different um, you know, areas that are tied together. He's got down what he does with loans, what he does with general ledgers, what he does with payroll, special council requests, which is me most of the time, um city records, miscellaneous budget. So he's got all those duties and so you need to look at what's on here or ask for a copy because that makes, it makes it real clear what everybody thinks they're doing. And I, and I think I have, I have everybody's pretty much, Nikki?
Yeah, mine just, I saw I added to his on his job description, started a list.
Of other things, okay.
So it's really real, but he didn't quite get what you're asking.
And, and I just went back for Jim's, I went back when he first gave us his um letter of resignation, you know, on the backside of that. Now, where did I put it? On the backside of that, he had a number of things listed.
Yeah, I read that.
Yeah. So, so Jim kind of did the same thing.
But what is it online, the new thing that you got just recently or has it been out there forever?
Just this last.
Just this week she requested, yeah.
So it's just new?
Yeah, uh-huh, as of last Friday when it came up.
I wasn't aware of that.
Oh, okay. Yeah, and, and then when you ask something, if Zach replies to you on here, be sure and look on here, don't just expect it to go to be otherwise. And he did, so.
Yeah, Zach's going to the open meeting, but uh, but I talked to Zach earlier and Jim, he would like to have some time where he gets to sit with you and kind of get a lot of information on things that you're doing right now and that, and is that right, Zach?
We, we don't even know where we want to go. I don't want to go into executive.
We will, Larry, just a moment. I must, I'm just saying, this is why we want to go into executive session, is, so we as a council can discuss these things. And.
You're having a good discussion right now.
Now, I make a motion that we go into executive session to discuss number four, Jim's contract.
Second.
What's the reason? You have to say the reason, statute order reason.
And if Jim doesn't want it?
The reasoning to, to possibly restructure his contract, read it, understand it.
I don't want my contract restructured. It's very straightforward.
I haven't even seen it, Jim. I just had it tonight.
If you talk about lack, lack of uh transparency, I think we've been remiss in not having copies of the contract for all of our employees available to say, we'd like to see that contract, we'd like to see this contract. Because it's pretty hard for us to approve a contract we've never seen.
No one has asked, except for Ross, asked me a couple of months ago for a copy of the contract. Larry's never asked.
Did Ross give one?
No, I didn't give one.
Nobody else in the community is asking for a contract, Jim?
Not me, that's what I know.
But I think legally.
It's a public record.
It's a public record that any citizen could make a written request and look at it, but yet we can't look at it when we've asked for it. When did you first ask for it? You asked for it a week ago?
I went in Jim's office on Monday afternoon. We went to him, four o'clock, and I said, Jim, I'm here to look at the contract. And he said, it's not available, I don't have it, Lee has it. But I will contact Lee, come back tomorrow, four o'clock, we'll go look at it. I went in at four o'clock yesterday afternoon, Teresa, minor's office, and said, Teresa, I'm here to look at it. And she said, I don't know anything about it, Lee's not here, don't have it. So I said, well, we're going to renew our contract Wednesday and contract's not here available.
My only question is, why does this matter now? It's been eighteen years. Why, why now would we so?
I think it's that Garnwell time that we used to see the contract.
I understand that, I understand that, but.
I've been a council of thirteen years, I've won every election, I've had a contestant against me in every primary and in every election. And I don't have a right to see the contract?
I mean, you can see the contract, but what, why are we having this meeting today?
I don't know. We were having the meeting so we could have discussions that we could do as a council, at the retreat.
Larry, I have to say, no one asked for the contract because we already run the wage thing every summer. That's all everything cares about is what we make, so that's in the paper.
We're not concerned about what we make or what you make. What we're concerned about is trying to have a transition and trying to figure out how Jim, you know, Jim's requested that he can resign in August if he wants to. And that's still on the table. What we're looking for is an extension. And we would like to have some input on the extension. And it won't be the same as what the contract is not, it'll be the same in pay. But it won't necessarily be the same in other areas if we have a chance to at least have some input on a contract that we're supposed to be agreeing to.
What are you going to change? His automobile allowance, his cell phone allowance?
No.
His, his medical.
No.
That's all that's in there.
Like, not financially, what, what maybe we.
You're talking about, look at the ordinance, that your, your focus is on the wrong thing, not on his contract. It should be on the city administrator ordinance. That's what you either want to get rid of or tweak or turn or, you know, whatever. That's where the duties and responsibilities are. And as I listen to you, I think that's what you're concerned about, is do we need to make adjustments in what his duties, responsibilities, tasks are? Those are not in his contract.
But, but we may want to say, um, in, in the next, you know, months, we would like you to work with Zach on these specific areas.
Tell me.
I know.
You don't need to.
It just, it just blows my mind that we have, we've had, have to have this kind of discussion.
I, I think, I think as elected officials, we, if Larry wants to go into executive session, I think we go into executive session. As long as we're discussing what we talked about discussing.
Let me just say that it's a class or misdemeanor to participate in, in a session that's not, if it's determined not to be legal.
What's, what's the, uh, what's the?
Up to a five hundred dollar fine.
What happens if we don't, if we have public officials that don't follow the ordinances? Like, for example, maybe have people on committees that are only supposed to be on one committee that end up being on three committees.
These file a writ of mandamus to require, the court order requiring them to do whatever they're supposed to do.
Because we've had that problem since I've been on the council.
Well, maybe we need to pull away from the table, get another opinion from another source about how we do maybe address some of the issues that.
Is there a different way of going about it?
I'm clearly going in executive session probably in my opinion, in the best opinion, based on our legal advice. I, is there a different way to go about it?
Well, you can form a committee to study the, and, and come back with proposals, you know. I mean, what I'm hearing, I don't know what the issue is with Jim's contract, but I'm hearing is structurally, do you want a city administrator type city government or do you want something else? That's, that should be prime, a prime subject for a public discussion, not some private discussion. And if you want to talk specifically about Jim's contract, he has a right for that to be discussed in public session if he doesn't. I don't care what you think, Larry, you know, if it's a reason or not, if he doesn't want it to be, if he wants it to be discussed in private, then you can. So.
Okay, let's, why don't we, as council mayor, move on to Jim's contract and talk about it?
I don't have one. You got one?
Well, I just got it tonight. And, and for people that say, what's the issue? We've been here for eighteen years and never had an issue. It's my damn fault, I'm a city official, I should have asked to look at that contract a long time ago. And on the other side is when that renewal came up every two or three years, why weren't we aware of it? It was coming up. What do you guys want to do? As a council, I've never, never heard that his contract's coming up. Do you guys want to look at it? I've never heard that. Haven't you, Paul?
No, I've never signed a contract.
Okay, he's been a mayor for how many years? The last, the comment that I see here that we got from you was from Jim Clark.
Two thousand and eleven.
Yeah, two eleven. Is that the last one that a mayor has signed?
Yes.
To your knowledge.
Because it rolls over every two years.
Yeah.
But I think, I think Lee's got a valid point, though. The contract is basically just the outline of compensation and things like that. It's not necessarily a job description or anything. That's separate from the contract. So it's kind of two separate issues, am I right?
That's in the ordinance.
Right.
The job description.
So if, if there's an issue with the job that's being done, that would be separate from the contract and the contract renewal. Does that make sense?
Well, the issue with contract renewal is Jim's contract ends in August. So if we do nothing, then his contract ends in August and we don't employ Jim from August to December?
If you do nothing, his contract ends in August.
Well, what if we just say, I mean.
That's what I'm saying, you.
I mean, we don't want to just say, Jim, you're done in August. That's not our point, that's not our point.
Well.
But we would like to say, Jim, when your contract comes up in August, we're going to be looking for a replacement. We would like to have you spend some time on something different, working with Zach, working with Nikki, so they have got a good foundation to build on if they do end up taking over a lot of those responsibilities. And I think that's valid. I think that's something we should talk about with, I, I think it needs to, and Jim has told us that when he's done in December, he would hang on and help train those people. But we would like to have it so he's training those people in maybe September and October and November.
I'm fine with doing that, Paul. That's why I wanted to give you guys seven months or better to say, all I'm asking is to extend the contract, nothing changes, nothing. Except my employment ends in December rather than August. I will work as hard and diligently as I can to help anybody. That's why I said, yes, I want to do this. I don't want to walk away in August, I can't. I don't want to do that. Not fair.
No, we appreciate it. Okay, so I'm ready to sit down and talk about Jim's contract so at least we can get something moving on that, Paul. Because, you know, I appreciate what Jim's doing and has done, but okay, so this is what I'm thinking about his contract. That we maximum extend his contract until December first, twenty twenty-one, with the option to terminate contract any said time with approval of the mayor and council. That is just example is, we're going to ask him to stay on after his contract expires, but we're going to give him extensions until December first, twenty twenty-one. And why we may terminate it anytime in that period from August to December is because we found a replacement and we feel comfortable moving on without his assistance.
Twelve one, Larry, or twelve thirty one?
Twelve one.
Okay, and what's your reasoning there? I mean, you don't have to tell me, but.
I said twelve one.
Twelve one.
Yeah.
Hey, Jim asked for the thirty-first just to make a clean break at the end of the year, so.
We thought, I just thought, with Christmas and the holidays and stuff, there's a lot that, there's not going to be a lot of things done in the last two weeks of December, is how I feel about it. And if we can get somebody on board by December first, they would at least have a couple of weeks to.
So you want to have a ship of no captain for a couple of weeks, something like water main breaks or something like that?
No.
Kind of on whoever to. I just, I don't think that's a good way, if you're thinking saving a few bucks or something like that, I don't think that's the way to do it. But I'm not sure what the angle is, I guess.
I was just looking at saving money and we might have somebody on board come September or October that, you know, we can say, Jim, we're comfortable.
So you're saying you can terminate the contract at any point without any notice?
Right. Yeah, I mean, you know, you have him ten days?
I don't think that's reasonable. You're going to say ten days, clean your office out? I don't, I don't think that's reasonable.
For everything is done for the city and, and all the time is spent, I think, I should, thirty-one days was in.
Okay, you got thirty-one?
Twelve thirty-one is what I, I mean, I, to me, it's not.
Yeah, I don't see a reason to.
I think it's a benefit of the city, the longer he stays on, the better trained a new person's going to be if we get one. And that's going to be the better benefit for the city, not, not going out and if I try to fail anything.
I think over to December thirty-first then, but with the option to terminate his contract, we have, do you want to give him a day's notice? Two days' notice, thirty days' notice?
Well, let's just look at this. Let's look at the way through the school board. And we have a superintendent. They terminated his contract.
Was there a buyout there?
I have no idea. But doesn't it look good for our school that we terminated the superintendent? Usually that happens with a malfeasance of a very serious nature. And I sat in on a hearing for one of our teachers that was released. And it was interesting because they caught me as I was going out the door to the state track meet and I missed the whole state track meet to sit on my butt and listen to them and their lawyer. And they terminated the teacher even though she had the highest number of students that went to paper classes, they were elective classes. Her job reviews were excellent, 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 bang, because they wanted to throw out a teacher. So it does happen. And I don't live in my law land and in fairy tale land, I live in the real world. And it's happened in our community. And if Larry wants to have a contract where he thinks that maybe we could find somebody and have them in place by December first, I don't disagree. But it's a bad deal, but, because ask Martin Beachon about a bad deal or a good deal. Ask Allen Emerson Athletes about a bad deal or a good deal.
Because what I'm looking at is we have Jim in town December thirty-first if we need him. But if we have somebody that's capable and ready to go and trained and we're comfortable with it, that we can say, Jim, in twenty-five days, this individual's going to be ready to go and we won't need you after October first.
We're much more beloved than that, then. We're much more beloved than that than other boards. And I have no problem with what we agreed to originally, which was simply to approve his contract the last council meeting. But no one had the contract to even look at. And is that malfeasance on our part that we don't even have a contract that we can see? And we get, we see it on the day of the special meeting to discuss the contract. Does that demand too much from us? I don't think so. We've been duly elected officials. And we put a lot of blood, sweat and tears into being a good council. But we're not reimbursed with great, with, I mean, we're basically volunteers here.
I just can't see if, if we have somebody capable and hired to be our next job pillar, this, why do we keep Jim around and paying somebody else?
I think, I think it's going to take quite a while to train somebody. I mean, with all the job duties that he has, I, and this is going to be a probably a two or three month process just trying to find somebody.
Jim, how long, how long did you have somebody training you?
Yeah.
Jim, what was your, what was your job previously?
Public works director.
Central city.
It's kind of, you know, that's what I'm saying. He, he kind of understands.
You're like making my bogus the, say it very basically, Jim. You had the, you were heading the central city.
Utilities?
Yes.
True.
I, I mean, and I live in the real world. I don't think we're going to find anybody that does what's, just telling you from my experience. I think it'll be very difficult. You're going to find somebody that's going to be able to step in and say, I'm going to be the new city administrator. I would hope that our staff will stay with us and we can maybe put something together at least for a period of time and see how satisfactory that that would work out. But I think the job training shouldn't start in August or September. I think it could start now because these people are here now. That we, that, that show, have shown some interest in maybe doing that. And I think it's time now to start working to train somebody.
I'm looking at the whole picture, possibly restructuring this, this, everybody. Because I'm looking, you know, we're losing Jim as administrator, but also we're losing him as experienced lineman. Do we have to fill lineman duties in Winkell?
That's going to be hard to fill.
We don't have that. And my, my other thing is, where's Megan Weaver coming into this picture? I mean, who's paying her? What's costing us? I mean, can we combine some of these, these jobs out there into more efficient with less money being used? Because what are we paying Megan? I don't even know. I want to see some of these figures. And I think the community wants to see some of these numbers.
You guys are not paying me.
Okay.
My board, the nonprofit board that was formed is the ones that, that pay me.
We pay the board.
You, the CRA gives thirty thousand and sales tax gives thirty thousand a year to that position.
And so if we restructure, maybe it would make more sense to have you be a city employee and keep that money, you know, moving inside rather, because you're doing a lot of stuff already. I mean, you're, you're doing a lot of stuff already, you know?
Yeah, I'm looking at, you know, do we need, do we need an economic director plus administrator plus a assistant administrator, what Nikki does, and plus a trader? Do we need all?
You name all the traders, you need an administrator, uh, you got, you can have some of those off, some of those positions to be covered with staff that the city already employs, but we don't have an electrician. Our lineman, um, we, Zach has indicated he's not real interested in going down doing public works as far as doing the water and all that. I don't think Nikki would be either. Uh, so there's a lot of pieces to the puzzle. And I get it, you guys are busy. Why don't we just form a committee and put Val and Larry on the committee? And do that. And let's approve the contract. And we can have, you can have a committee meeting. You can talk about everything. Or you want to go into executive session? That's, you, council calls.
It can't come down to committee. I won't be part of the committee. Especially Graham. Sorry.
No, I think it needs to be the council's decision.
I've got a lot of free time, but I haven't got enough free time to sit and spin my wheels.
That's my, I think we need to look at restructuring what we have, what we have for employees, what their responsibilities are. Can some of these people move up to do more?
Some of that's a conversation you have to have them. I mean.
Well, it's not them. It's us what we want to recommend. I mean, we're not going to get them to pick the choice. Do you want to keep your job? I've never had that opportunity. I've been told a lot of times, you got to start doing this to keep your job.
I also think, I mean, we also don't want three people gone instead of one. I, I think we do have to, I think we do have to include them in some of the conversations.
Oh, yeah, we do.
I mean, they're an important part of the, the process.
I think a lot of that is the mayor's responsibility. We have had conversations, good conversations, but at some point in time, you have to involve the rest of the people in the council.
Right.
And I know that you're busy. I know that Ross is busy. We don't want to lose, I know Val's going to be busy. He's got a lot of things going on. I know Larry's busy. I hate to interfere with your time, but when we set a special meeting, then you'd like to get what you want to do accomplished. And it's not going to happen tonight, I don't think. And we're not going to form a committee. So you want the mayor to just keep working on it?
Well, I think we need to see where we're going with Jim's contract and get that done. And that, that's just fine with the contract, to keep the contract as is. And maximum extension would be to the December thirty-first, twenty twenty-one. With the option to terminate contract with a thirty day notice with approval of the mayor and council. And what that thirty days means is come October, if we got somebody that's ready to go, or if we got nowhere we're going, then we can say, Jim, your contract's going to be terminated for November.
So we got exactly what we had, uh, two months ago. And Jim, how many vacation days do you have? You had a lot before, I know, a year ago.
Six weeks.
Six weeks of vacation time.
So he's got six weeks of vacation time to burn?
He's not taking vacation.
Burn?
I doubt he's going to burn six weeks of vacation.
What's the notice of termination right now? Ninety days, thirty days?
What, what's your question?
In the contract, what, what's the notice of termination?
What is it now?
Yeah.
Ninety.
Is it ninety? And you know, the present contract has distinction between termination with cause and without cause.
We have no cause. We have no reason. We just simply know that Jim is going to retire.
Well, that termination might be more, less than.
I don't think it's fair to put a thirty day termination in there. I mean, I just don't think it's, we extend his contract. I don't think at some point we should come in and say, no, sorry, now we're going to catch a short cut too. I just don't think that's a fair rule for somebody who's served the community for eighteen years. Now, if he says, you know what, you found somebody, um, you know, I'll take December off or whatever. I think that's fair if we can come to a mutual decision. What do you think, Jim?
I'm workable, but.
You're, under this contract, you pay him ninety days. You give him severance for ninety days.
We only have vacation time here again. That's all the more reason to start training now and get going with it, in my opinion, but.
Get advertising for, it's not like we need to.
Well, that's something we need to talk about tonight, Jim. We want to advertise a position and win.
Yeah.
I mean, that's something we want to do in executive session. We just won't do it out in the open and do it. The next school board gets to go to executive session.
If you have something you want to say that you think should be in executive session, let's go to the executive session.
Hey, I can just say whatever I think anyway.
It should probably be in executive session, yes, that's right.
That's why we should be in executive session.
Well, if, if you've got something to say, Larry, then, you know, I guess if you're not telling us what you're thinking here, then we don't know if we should be in executive session.
I'm not thinking. I was ready to approve at the council, but you know that. But we didn't get the approval. We set up a retreat, which is tonight is the retreat. And we ended up, the same thing, we do it every time. We, ever since, you know, it's interesting because when we had the retreat before and Jim set it up, we never had any issues. But if, when I had a retreat out here, we had lawyers here, we had all kinds of things we couldn't, couldn't do. The difference was in my retreat, we didn't have lunch and, and those, we talked about economic development director, we might have life of the city. So, anyway. Yeah, we want to talk about per diem too. What's your per diem to the firing department, Larry? On overnight say.
Uh, firemen get twenty-five dollars per day for their expenses per meal.
Per meal?
Per meal.
We have no limit, but that's like a good way to do business.
But they get their lodging paid.
Anyway, I think we just want to, if you're in the meeting and take the.
Yeah, and I think we need to, I just wanted to get this knowledge, why we could not go into executive session this evening.
You got that meeting court deadline, Paul, huh?
I'm not going to, I'm not, I'm done. I spent hours on this stuff. Every time I come to council meetings, I'm unprepared. Just tired of it.
No, I just want to know why.
Because you've not stayed there to reason, Larry.
Okay, my reason is personal issues to discuss salary, to discuss the contract of Jim's. That is my, my, my reason. Does anybody else have a reason besides me to go into executive?
No, it's your motion.
Okay.
Now, and, and, and that might be a legitimate reason, but if Jim doesn't want it in closed session, then it's not.
So can I just say that Jim's done in August?
Well, you have to give him notice. But that's what I'm saying. I don't know that you're going to meet between now and May fourth. So, yeah. And I, that's, to me, if I was in your position, that's probably what I would do. And it gives you until August to renegotiate and do your, whatever it is you're trying to accomplish.
Is that okay with you, Jim? Would you do that?
I mean, it's not really fair to Jim, but it's an option.
But what's fair to us is the, like, like a body, what is fair to us? That's a question I'd like to ask.
You're dealing with his contract. You're dealing with a new.
And we've been pretty fair over the years, I would say. We've, we've bit the bullet on several occasions where we'd had maybe something that didn't quite work the way we thought it would work. And I know I've been involved in some of those and I'm fine with the job Jim's done. But I would like to be able to get a contract. I would like to have it done last week. And now I'd like to get it done tonight. But if we can't, then we'll just do that. If that's the simplest thing, so that's what you would do.
Well, I'm just saying that's, you need to do something or it's going to roll over into two years. Then you're going to be looking at having to pay him severance.
So you could extend his contract tonight. You can still do that. You just don't need to do it in an executive session. Make a motion to extend his contract under the, under the terms until December thirty-first. Be done.
Okay, here, I just want to, because for the last time, Lee, you're not recommending, or you're not recommending that we go into executive session. My motion was to discuss Jim's contract.
I think you could make that motion, Larry. But if Jim doesn't want to do it.
Okay, okay.
So go ahead. You need a second.
I'm going to make that motion and be going to executive session to discuss Jim's contract. And if I don't get a second. If I don't get a second, then it's dead. But if I get a second, we have to ask Jim if, if it's okay with him.
Right.
Okay, and if it's not okay with him.
Then you can either drop it, you know, or you can have your discussion, but it'll be over.
Okay. I make motion, we go into executive session to discuss Jim's contract.
A second. So Jim has to make the call.
You know, I do not want to go into executive session. We've been open about this the whole time, guys, so.
You have a motion to second, though, if you need to vote.
Okay.
Want to move if Jim says no?
Well, it will be, but you don't have anything until you.
Okay, fine.
I mean, you can withdraw your second.
No.
I.
I, Larry?
I.
Ross?
Uh, here are Jim's requests. I'm going to say nay.
Burn?
Nay.
Nay. Nay, so it's two to two. Well, I'm, because Larry's done a lot of work on this and has done a lot of work over the last many years, I would say yes. Vote executive session. Now, Jim has objection to that.
He said he doesn't want an executive session, so he can't. Well, you can have the discussion. It's just going to open the discussion.
Okay, one more question I have as far as contract goes, and it probably isn't going to make any difference because we're not going to change anything, but but I, I need to understand how this will go moving forward with another person. Like, when salaries are increased, does that change in your contract?
Yes.
You know, like when your salary is increased, so then you, then you do an abandonment to the contract like this one tonight. I, see, I just, I don't know how that process will work going forward with somebody else. And I want to know who, you know, how that, how that works. I don't know.
Jim can make it explain how it has worked. I mean, he, Jim.
Because certainly in eighteen years, you've gotten a number of raises.
But each year, he does, he does a review of the employees and recommends, you know, whether they get a raise or not. And, and at that time, you consider, I mean, you go along your part of that. When the council approves, whatever you're doing with all the employees, normally you approve, Jim's gotten whatever.
Not, not each year because Jim's on a two-year contract, so usually his has been three percent. There's been time the other employees will get three percent and then the next year they'll get one and a half or two, I think two percent. And then the next year is actually when Jim is involved with the contract. And then we might have three percent again, and then the next year it's like two percent. So the other employees will always get the same, I mean, the, the raises aren't exactly the same.
So with the council, it's approved at each.
In my memory, that hasn't the mayor usually made a recommendation, I think Mike Luke one year made a recommendation as far as a salary adjustment or not, doing salary adjustment.
He did, he.
And the council would approve that.
He does at the, um, when we have our budget hearings, I think, when, when Mike made it, he said one and a half percent raise. And I think we got it up to two and he would go higher than two, but I think he did that in the budget meeting for the budget committee.
But going forward, right, so you have a new employee with a, with, with a contract. You vote to give him, you vote to give him or her a raise? You make a change in the contract?
Here's a question. Do we think about especially initially doing a yearly contract versus a two-year?
Well, that's one reason we want to talk about it, because it should be probably yearly like everybody else's is.
Right.
You should get out somebody like me, but that was.
I take the promise, but then they gave up on Jim once he was relocated. To, to the area, he was, I think you probably wanted a two-year contract, didn't you, Jim? Initially.
The other thing is that is a standard contract that comes from Nebraska City Managers Group. Everybody starts with a two-year contract. The, the school superintendent has a two-year contract. Now, at some point in time, I guess if you want to change that at the end of the contract of that two years, then you can say, all right, from this day forward, you could have one-year contract, one-year contract. We will renew it every year. That's entirely up to you guys.
And then like the, the allowance, the four hundred for the truck allowance? That is, that would be maybe gone if we have somebody else. Unless Jim's going to give them the truck. You know, upright, those things are things.
Those things are changeable, Val. Okay, that's all stuff we can change.
There's a lot of, a lot of the contracts with our employees, with a lot of employees are probationary contract tracks too. But not necessarily with the city administrator.
Right, but you can have that in there. You can put a probationary.
You put a probationary, a training period and a probationary period and a, and that, that's what we want to talk about, guys.
Well, I think that's why I say to do is say, hey, whoever that individual is, uh, you're on probation for ninety days. And, uh, at the end of ninety days, we're going to say, yes, we're going to retain you or no, um, this is going to work. Oh, that's a fair thing to do.
I simply. Most simply.
The employee doesn't wanna be here if he or she's not doing the job, especially if they've never done it before. And they, oh, boy, I wouldn't wanna get in there and make big money. Well, okay, but the fun stops quick. So.
But if we also, if that's also clear, um, if we get to an interview process, people might back away before they consider.
Thanks, we have a, a, a
provisional.
candidate that's, you know, clearly
solid.
solid, it's probably something that they would back away from, but, I mean, that's a, that's something that we'd have to decide if we wanna, you know, do one a year, or make it a two-year anyway, and.
One of the things you might consider is, and I know we've done it a lot, is to get a hold of the lead. And ask them about, hey, we haven't had a city administrator in a new contract for eighteen years. What's new, what's different, what's changes? And let them give you a contract that you can look at and just tear apart.
And if it, if it seems like Jim's sharing information and training young people the way they need to be trained, um, to help fulfill, you know, the goals that we have as a council and as a city, you know, then, then we may have to really reevaluate how we wanna set up the contracts and, and maybe even ordinances. You know, if we end up splitting up the duties that Jim has done, you know, part of it's gonna have to do with having someone that can handle the electricity. You know, and, and the rest of the things, because we've already started kind of spreading things about some. Um, I'm, I'm just thinking, you know, in terms of contracts, that'll make a big difference. So maybe, maybe then, maybe we'll get to a point where we'll say, okay, right now Nikki and Zach are gonna split it, and there, we'll go six months and we'll see how it goes, and then, and then see.
But see, we haven't got any to happen from them, they won't do that even.
Yeah, I, yeah.
I'm saying, I did do it with Zach, I did do it a little bit with Nikki. To see if Thomas could run. And talked about maybe hiring a person to come in and work the office, uh, and, and hire that kind of a position, maybe just, and, but we also know that they can't do everything that Jim has done. As far as the righteousness of our council, that irritates me just a little. Uh, there was a really good young teacher in Wakefield, we had a new superintendent. The teacher was, the teachers are probationary at that time for two years. The superintendent took pride in the fact that less than half of the teachers that he hired made it through their probationary period. He ruined, in short, he ruined the career of a good, promising young educator. And so I don't wanna hear about how righteousness fits into this, because I don't think it does. I think it's business. We're here to get the best person and have the best administrative staff possible, and do it as economically feasible as possible.
For a dollar per dollar. That's why I think we need to look at restructuring what we have in our employees and staff, and see if we can combine some of these responsibilities and, and see where we go, because we need to, to me, what are we gonna do about electrical service? Are we gonna have to get a contract with Nebraska probably?
Well, Jim would have some ideas on that, as far as, we've talked about that with Northeast or maybe with Mark Klein. Or maybe there's, but you have the line, does Mark have a line in the employee, Jim?
Not anymore.
Not anymore, no. So, and then Jim's also gotten the budget that we, I mean, we've talked about these things, Jim and I have, about, we need a new truck for God's sakes if we're gonna have somebody doing the, isn't that true, Jim?
Need to update it for sure.
The bucket truck. And so there's a lot of things that go into this, and we're trying to prepare for it as best we can. But I do think at some point in time, we need a candid meeting with the council. And it's not gonna be tonight, I don't think, but if you wanna go on and.
If it's, if we're here tonight, let's do it tonight.
Okay.
We're gonna need to call another special meeting and waste everybody's time.
Exactly, that's what I'm trying to make your guy's mind.
If, if there's an issue with the job that's being done, and you don't think we should continue on with Jim, then let's just deal with it. And if it's, if it's somebody else, and it's saving money, then let's deal with that. But in my opinion, there's too much going on here to say we're gonna save a few bucks in the city office. We need to decide what we think is best for Wakefield, and we budget for that. We don't save money on the city office. Okay, because otherwise, when we have things, you know, falling apart around town, who does it fall on? You, and you, and you, and me, and you. Okay, and we can't be here every day, every minute, every day. You have to have a city administrator. Okay, I mean, that's my opinion, but.
Yeah, I agree with city administrator.
We're not, we don't have a problem, Jim.
No.
The problem is, we want to see the contract, we didn't see it until tonight. And now we're being asked to go ahead and approve the contract, or to say that Jim's terminated in August, and then we can have a provisional contract, which that's not our purpose. Our purpose was to try and get some candid conversation at a, uh, an executive session, but. Anyway, I think we just make, we need a motion to, I don't wanna talk about it anymore, I'm tired of it. I would like to see us approve him for a contract that runs from August through December thirty-first, and you can go to January first, you want to, I don't care, but. Uh, hopefully we'll have something figured out by then. But there's no guarantee.
I don't have, you know, that, that's just my thinking on the contract, December thirty-first, but have a cloud in there that he's done when we get somebody. And the other thing is, I want to look at restructuring our, our staff, I mean, maybe we need to do the staff we got, but maybe we need to see if people can step up and wanna do something else.
It seems like you're hammering on, be hard on us. Just come on and say it. If someone's not doing a good enough job, tell us.
No, no, you guys are doing good enough job, but we gotta avoid the fill when Jim's gone. We gotta avoid the fill when Jim's gone with electrical. Can the city staff down here?
But at the same time, we're saying, we want to be able to terminate you whenever we want. It, it doesn't make sense, Larry.
Well, I will be fit, Larry, that, because the hardest word being city council.
I don't, I don't disagree with that one, so.
And anyway, at least giving the common courtesy is to listen to what he wanted to say. Which was that he just is thinking, if you find somebody, then are they gonna want to start, you know, what if you have somebody that wants to start now? Well, he said, well, we've got an, we've got an extension with our administrator till December thirty-first. Well.
Even if, even if you restructure it, and let's say, you know, Nikki and Zach and everybody just kind of retools, don't you think it'd still be a good idea to keep Jim on till the end of the year so he can do some of the management?
Yeah, that's what my, that's what I wanted to do.
So why do we have a problem with that?
We didn't have a problem. We had him at Jim the last month, and we didn't do it because we had nobody to see the contract, that's the reason that was given. I, I just think that, um.
So I, I think what would be good is if, if we could see the contract, it'd be a good place to start, and then we can all decide or talk about at some point, maybe adjustments that we would maybe possibly make. You know, I mean, initially I said maybe a year would be better, now you just say, you know, most administrators get a two-year contract, maybe two years, and we're gonna be competitive with, with other applicants, I guess is what I'm saying.
Probably not gonna get anybody hired without starting with a two-year contract. You're asking somebody to move here probably, right?
Yeah, possibly.
Yeah, I'm, I'm just.
You could, you could amend the contract after your two-year period, maybe you have a
Yeah.
and, that's what I think, they prob, when you have to relocate, you need a little bit of a, uh, I, I guess, a commitment for a period, a longer period than twelve months. Pretty hard to lose every year. But I just think we, we, we want to look at the contract.
Do you wanna look at the contract before we extend Jim's contract?
We have to be out when.
I don't need to look at it, but I.
Four days.
May fourth.
May fourth.
I guess I don't really need to look at it either. I mean, I, I wanna see it at some point, but, you know, if we're just talking about extending the contract, I have no problem doing that.
I mean, you've got until August to look at it, if you, if you give a notice of termination, or you got until December to actually look at it and discuss pros and cons and, you know.
I, I guess as far as the contract goes, Jim's in the, the rearview mirror. I, I would be interested in the contract moving forward, if, if that makes sense.
Yes, that's what we wanted to do.
Right.
But it, it's, it, it frustrates me that we couldn't get a copy of the contract. Because any citizen can have a written notice that they want a copy of anybody's contract that works for the city of Wakefield, and they have to be providing that contract. Right?
Yeah, but.
Oh my goodness, the council.
The contract's been there, as far as I know. Nobody asked me until I learned today about it, so I'm invited, Larry.
We, Larry asked for a contract, and was told, well, why do you need to see it? Nobody's business why he wants to see it. If Joe Blow wants to see it, he can see it. And that frustrates me that we're, you know, we tried to be transparent, and I would hope that our city office would be transparent, and our, you know, our, our legal team would be transparent.
I'm transparent, what do you want? I, the reason I didn't give one to Ross is I didn't have a sign, so I wasn't sure where it was, and Zach provided you with the sign, but, um, so that's our, I don't know what other transparency you want. No, that contract's been there somewhere in the city office for eighteen years. You can go see it whenever you want. No, I don't know anybody that's withheld that, but, but I don't know, I'm, I'm sure.
Yeah, that, that's all history. I mean, if we do it, and we get to look at it every two years, or every thirteen years, it's always been in the file, and nobody's ever called it to our attention, and his contract's coming up in August, you gotta wanna look at it or redo it, I've never. So that, that's all history. I think we gotta go plan for what's coming down or losing Jim. And I think we need to figure a plan out how we're gonna cover the loss of electricity. How we're gonna do that. And I want to possibly look and see what everybody's doing with the city, and possibly restructuring some of the job opportunities. If, if people wanna move around, and if they can do it, if they can't, then we need to consider that. I'm for getting a dollar out of a dollar. I mean, like I said, we got administrator, we got assistant, we got an economic development director, and we got the treasurer. We got four people in the office.
No, we don't, they have the economic directors and then our office.
Yeah, but could we revert to the office and save thirty thousand from the sales tax?
Though I recognize, the economic development director's position was created outside the city, uh, office, but we, it was a two to three-year, uh, experiment to see how it worked.
Is that what it is? So they have a contract for two years?
I have no idea. They don't have a contract.
No, you don't have a contract, though.
I don't have a contract.
Yeah, when, when we, when we put that together, Larry, that was, I think, some of the thing was, you know, we didn't wanna hire another city employee. And that was kind of a step around, you know, them being tied into the city office and that sort of thing. It wasn't technically city dollars.
Then we thought at that time that the group that would, uh, the committee that would support the economic develop, development position would raise private dollars for a lot of improvements in the community. And wouldn't be coming to the city for money, or revenue, or money to do projects. But it would be more likely to get dollars from, uh, people outside the community.
Do you, Jim, do you think you could come up with some options? Because, I mean, the electric and all that stuff is great to me. Do you think you could come up with, you know, options for us moving forward, whether, you know, different individuals or agencies that we could contract with for those issues, or?
Sure.
You know, the dream would be if you could find somebody that's, you know, multi-tool, could do that type, type of thing, but that's gonna be, you know, that's gonna be tough.
Well, Larry fears most is in an emergency situation. And we've got luxury, Jim is usually here, he can jump in the truck, and he will, and he'll take care of his business. And you're not gonna get that, aren't we, Jim? If you're gone, we won't get that, as far as anybody right here on the staff that can do that.
That's true.
And you're gonna wait for quite a while for Northeast Nebraska to get over for an emergency trouble, don't you think?
Well, we have a contract with NPPD, you know, but.
They're an hour and a half out.
They're, they're, they have some out of Norfolk, and, um, you know, if you have to pay them for a lot of different work and projects, you're gonna spend a lot of money.
What do other communities do?
I don't say have a thing, but, or they gotta have a contract with somebody, you know. Bender, I think, has three guys, and Blow has two or three.
Where did theirs come from? Local?
What's that?
Are they local people?
Yeah, city group.
We've got all of it, except you.
You know, when I hired Mike and when I hired Paul Gauthier, you guys wanna, wanna learn everything. And I said, you wanna learn the water, and sewer, the streets, and electric? Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. Never, ever come to me and said, hey, I wanna learn the water. It takes time, and it takes a whole lot of work.
And it's dangerous.
Yeah. So. But.
But like with the bullet alley, when they had the, uh, emergency there, did you, were you here to cut the power, or?
Yeah.
When Norman O had the accident? That was you?
Yeah.
So that's what we're talking about. And we're not gonna have that. Unless we can find somebody to train linemen that'll live in Wakefield.
Unless we don't take him off too much and he'll still do that. We never know.
So that, that's probably another thing we need to, uh, consider advertising our needs, what's our needs.
Well, that's it. I'm not sure Dan Lushkin Lushkin did much longer, does he?
No. We have.
Depends.
I think that that's a, that's a safety issue and a possible issue, I guess, isn't it? But anyway, that's one of the things we've been thinking about. We've got good people here, we've got Zach, we've got, you know, Nikki that are employed for the city, that are willing to explore some of these things. But they need to get, I think they need to get some expertise in it as soon as possible. And so they gotta see if they wanna do it or not, or what they might wanna do. And then as far as the water, we've got that covered. We've got the, uh, the light plant covered, don't we, Jim?
Yeah, I mean, the guys can run that pretty good, so.
Pretty good. We've got streets, but we don't have the, the bed, messy pieces, do you like the lineman? So.
Lineman, I think we need to advertise for a lineman and city administrator. See if we can get, do for the best one.
Yeah, I, I can understand that we could advertise, I think you should, but I think, well, let's just get a show hand, Ross, you thought we should advertise, right?
Well, I think you just gotta see what's out there.
Yeah, and Larry?
I think we need to do that.
Aurora just, um, was advertising for, um, an administrator slash economic development director, so they combined one.
Yeah, that's, well, yeah, we'll combine two or three positions, but our, our office is busy enough that we need to clerk treasures, keeps, I mean, that's quite a bit right there.
Yeah, 'cause in, in Nikki's adjustment, she does a lot more of the billing than you started doing, right? It's just kinda moved you to that? Just, because of what it is, okay?
So.
Can we, can we? I'm coming for moving forward with extending this contract, um, just to get, we need to get something done, I think, with that.
Okay, then I heard December first, December thirty-first. There's thirty days difference. Jim's got vacation days that you probably aren't gonna use, Jim?
Jim doesn't take vacation.
And would you, you did, then we would be paid vacation days, right?
If he's got it accrued, yeah.
But that is in the contract, right?
That's law.
And that's in everybody's.
But I'm, I'm thinking, this is what I'm thinking with Christmas time. I mean, most people, family people want off at Christmas. But, you know, I'm not gonna say that Jim has to be there training people all the way through December, if he wants to go to Florida, or wants to go wherever they wanna go. Uh, that's why I thought maybe December first was a little bit something that he might be interested in, but if that's not the case, and we would pay the vacation days then. Yeah, Jim doesn't miss work very often. Okay, so.
I'd like a motion to extend his, extend the contract, uh, through December thirty-first, or two of December thirty-first. With no, I mean, the, the time period, no time period. I won't say it.
No, we're gonna change the.
Agreement.
Okay, and how about with the same, uh, salary?
Just the same you're gonna do it right now, I think.
But see, the salary should go up, like you mentioned it.
Well, yeah, you would consider it at the end when you're doing your budget.
I think we need to have that in the motion. I think. I think he's got a three percent raise that will take effect when his new contract starts in September.
Yeah, is that what you've approved already?
We approved it, that's what the, everybody else got was a three percent raise.
October first. It starts with the budget, so...
Oh, so that's already started.
If they approve a pay raise for an employee's two percent, it wouldn't start till October thir- October first.
So you just thought that way. So your con- your pay, your pay would stay the same until October, November, December? Okay.
So the, the contract stayed the same, so the termination date of, uh, December thirty first.
So is your motion, if I understand, is it just to extend the contract to, under the same terms and conditions?
But with that ter- same terms and conditions, he would get a raise in October, November, right?
Or they would or wouldn't?
Would.
Yeah, he would, if you did it under the same term. That's how I would understand it.
That's, we got a motion, right?
Yes.
We decided, if we, and are we...
And there's no early termination in that motion? No.
Well, if Jim has to give us what notice if he decides to leave before the thirty days?
He's gotta give you, I don't remember what he had. At least three weeks, I think.
Two weeks.
At least three, I think. The event employee voluntarily resigns his position before expiration of the term, you shall be up to employ for three weeks notice in advance.
Three weeks.
Unless the parties otherwise agree, which may be a short, uh, due period. So I mean, that would kinda cover your, your notion, Larry, if we found someone else and if Jim was, you know, if it came to a mutual agreement, basically, we could terminate the contract if we wanted.
True.
Is that right?
With that situation. Yeah, if, if the parties agree.
The parties have to agree.
Otherwise. Yes. What? The second.
We got a motion in the second, Larry?
You know, I just got this contract ready. May.
Hi.
Now?
Aye.
Okay. Then that passed.
I'm on the way to turn.
Thank you.
Before we get to, where, where are we gonna be going with some of these other questions that we have?
I think Paul has talked to Zach and to Nikki, and I think...
Just briefly, I'm not...
How about, what I'm concerned is we need to get something advertised. Is that what we wanna do? We said we get, okay?
I think we should.
Okay, we said, we all agree that. Okay, then why don't we get something going on that?
Who does, who does, who makes up a...
We need to probably get a couple of us coming, we have their, do write up.
And, and then we put it in the lay-in list, Hallie's. I mean, that's where I see him. I don't, where else does it go? I don't have a clue.
There, there are though, I mean, I still don't know.
Trade journal.
Yeah. Sussexa Journal.
Website, the, the league also does website, Power Pool does websites. You get a lot of traffic.
But they've had a lot of, they've had a lot of city administrator meetings for a long time. Is that right, Jim?
Where's that?
At some of those communities, I mean, they have it for a long time.
Right, right.
Probably just hired a new administrator, you know, Jim, yeah?
He's, no, he's been, that's been holding for a while.
Yeah?
Okay, so we want to advertise, so we probably need to get a committee together to write up something to put in there.
Why don't you let Zach and Nikki and I work on it, then we'll let you guys look at it and see if you wanna send that out?
Shoot an email out to us and if there's an issue?
I won't send an email, but maybe Zach will. But I don't know if you wanna line, if you put lineman administrator, you're not gonna get it.
We don't know, we have here...
Just put the lineman might be a plus.
We could do a benefit or a plus benefit, it would be...
I'll look for it.
You know, just like the doorsman or, or if you have a certain degree as a benefit for the certain job.
And has, have you, have you announced your retirement?
Not really. I didn't know what you guys are gonna do.
And announce it now, you're going to tell December thirty first.
You think you know what we're gonna do yet?
I don't know, Paul.
I don't know what we're gonna do. So we're in the same boat. Okay, so we got a motion, the second we passed it, and now we need a motion to adjourn, Larry?
Well, I, I mean, if we have more discussion and if you guys have more questions, let's, we're all here, let's talk about it. I don't wanna have another discussion.
Neither do I.
Anything else?
What, so we wanna, yeah, we wanna get something out there.
He's got a journey, he'll talk about it, I guess, or not.
Then, then Zach can go home.
No, I might talk to him.
So the next up is Nikki and Zach and Paul are gonna work on that for a minute?
Yeah, correct. And I'd like to do it with Zach and have permission to visit with Zach and Nikki about, more about what they might be willing to add to their duties. I'm not saying that they wouldn't wanna, maybe they would wanna be applying for the administrator position. I mean, the, and then switch, you find new people to fill their spots or whatever.
And I, and I'd like, you know, to do some exploration to see if, if Megan would be interested in being part of the city office team and what that would mean as far as, um, how the pay could work. Could, could we still receive money from CRA and sales tax? I, could it be dedicated? I don't know any of those answers, but I'm thinking, you know, as, if you're, if you're starting to do all this stuff, then I, I could see it being a, a good three-headed monster, you know? I...
Well, you also have to understand that if you're gonna change the job description, you have to change the ordinance.
I read.
You know, Paul, that, you know, you do that over a three-month period. You're, you know, you've gotta have the job description that matches your ordinance.
Okay.
I would like to see city administrator slash economic development director.
Get your application in.
That, that, that would be something that I would...
And a lineman?
Sure, yeah, yeah. The lights is one for the bucket truck and pipe of hot wires.
Because, you know, I mean, uh, there are...
There are a few of them around the state that, right? You know, there is.
That you, city administrator slash economic development director, to me, it goes hand in hand with the small community.
Well, Jim has a lot of interest in economic development. I mean, most of your administrators probably would, wouldn't they, Jim?
Sure.
Because you did a lot of that before we had Megan. You were doing it.
And Nikki did some too. Um, I just, I just think that if there's a way that we can become more cohesively directed for the city, I think that would be smart. I think that would be the best way to use the funds, cause we have funds. We are so lucky compared to a lot of places.
But you're not gonna have the funds forever, right, Paul?
No.
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 No, that's something we gotta think about too. Your CRA funds are not gonna be there for fifteen more years. They're gonna expire in a lot, eight years, ten years?
Uh, nine?
Yeah.
She, I'll look at Megan, she would not.
Yeah, so your funds aren't gonna be there forever.
No.
So that's something you, you just as well figure that they're not gonna be there. I'd rather be on the, the dark side than saying, you know, in five years, we're gonna have to re, you know, hit the bottom, spend money, cause that money's gonna be gone. Plus, when that money's gonna be gone, where are we gonna come up with money to do some of the things? You're gonna look at money now.
How long do we have CRA, Jim? What year was that that we approved the?
I think we're five or six years into it.
Five years.
Yeah.
So were you in the council then?
You know, technically CRA has been around a long time. Lowell Johnson got that started back in nineteen...
No, I think it was nineteen seventy they started, I think that was by Kerry Nichols or, uh...
It's been around a long time.
Then they dropped it, right? They went in active.
Just went in active, yeah.
And there was no, nothing going on with it yet for years.
So if that's my feeling on CRA, that in eight years, it's gonna be gone, and then in ten years, we have...
And we don't wanna lose the, the impetus that we do have, you know? Um, and, and I, and I don't have a clue how seated Zach is in his numbers on, on his phone right now, but he's busy. Somebody's talking to, poor guy. You know, I don't know, I haven't talked to any of you guys to find out if you'd be willing to do more or do less. Maybe...
I think we're open, we've had a few discussions a little bit with Ross and Paul. We're open to discussing anything.
Just as long as you're breaking.
Right, but you also have to be realistic. You need to look at our job duties, our job description, our job duties.
What's the day-to-day?
You're talking about, I feel like some people are talking about taking three jobs that are full-time, plus some, and trying to make two people do it.
No.
It's, we're gonna fail. I mean...
Nikki, Nikki has a great list in there, if you, if you open up the, the things on, uh, tonight's agenda. I don't even know what item was, five maybe?
Yeah, attachments.
Are you still working on that, those boards for the, at the, for the, uh, public works department as far as listing what they're gonna?
No, they, they have it, they already have it done.
But the difference between having it and having it done is in fact you gotta have something on the board. I mean...
That's, that's Paul and me, he's not looking at you, he's looking at me.
We're talking about now with the shop, like having things that they're, every day having to know exactly what they're gonna do and go do it.
Task.
You know?
Like a whiteboard, a yearly whiteboard.
But what we also have it, knowing what's going on, weekly.
Anyway, just a little note to you, just, I mean, I, you know, I hope you do apply if you're interested in being a city administrator. And if that is the case, then maybe that is a chance to, you know, maybe you guys have a vision for what could be done, you know, more efficiently or better in the office too, but, um, I, yeah, I don't, I don't want this discussion to deter either of you two. If we're reaching out to bring somebody else in, to bring any boss in or whatever, I mean, maybe there is a way that we...
We, the discussion that we had was if we hired clerical staff, somebody, I mean, we've had, and I shouldn't even mention the name, but Carol and Julie are really good in the office. Now, they might not have any interest in doing it in another year, I don't know.
My mom's not really good. She's flexible.
She's what?
She's flexible, she can show up.
She's, but she's also very, uh, she greets people well, and so does Carol. But if you, if you could hire someone in a clerical position, as I think, and then we thought that maybe there'd be a chance that Nikki could maybe get involved in some of the things and Zach. But Zach's also, I think Zach's also interested in maybe a full-time, uh, city administrator position. Zach, am I speaking out of turn?
No, I'm interested.
So, we're pretty fortunate.
But you're just getting straight on the other stuff.
Well, he could, but that would be, to me, that would be a huge advantage for a city administrator. And because he does, if I ask Zach a question, he always has the answer, which I think is pretty remarkable because he knows what's... And when we go through those invoices, if you have a question, he knows what the money was going for, what it went for. And he also has a question mark for what's going, like we do. Yeah?
So Zach, could you do, could you do the city administrator and economic development director?
I think that has to come down to the road when he looks and figures out, if he would figure out how much time it would take. Because nobody, Zach doesn't do Jim's job, he doesn't know how much time that takes. I mean, I think you have to be realistic and give him a chance to sit down on some stuff and, uh, not, not necessarily fussy meetings, but, um...
I think kind of the heart of a city administrator in a lot of ways is an economic development type person too. You know what I mean? It's, even just not having that as a title, you're still doing it. Maybe you're not writing grants or whatever, you know, but, um, I think you, you have to do that, whether that's in your title or even job description or not.
You know, and, and back to my point, if everybody works together, then we're not ending up at cross purposes, um, when it comes to projects. Because you know, if the finances are there, you have the contacts, you know who to talk to to best have certain things happen. And just, I think, no matter which way we go, we have to really, really smooth the working relationship between the council and the staff so that we're all, you know, going the same way.
And the staff and the council with the community.
Yes, yes. You know, I love, I love that ha- I still don't know who all are the Wakefield progressives. I'd love to be able to visit with some folks, besides John, poor John, Dr. Ham. You know, just, it just worries me that...
Well, I don't know that we made the right decision there, I really don't. And I was kind of the proponent that thought it would be a good idea. I, I, you know, I've had this conversation with other council members, whether the economic development position needs to be brought in under the control of the council. And those people, three of them, I think, were on the committee that, that talked about and, and listened to economic... We didn't listen to the, we basically listened to people that had a, had a role in economic development. So they were usually in favor, we saw the advantages of having an economic development director for the most part, in our meetings that we, that I went to. We didn't really have anybody that was on the understand what, whatever the disadvantages, but, and I thought that if we set it up outside the jurisdiction of the council, and I looked at what Pender was doing, and I think there was a setup that way. They were hiring, at that time, they were hiring a person, can't think of her name right now, but she worked, they commissioned her on different projects and paid her hourly wages. And now I think, I don't know if they've changed her now, but we've said this many times, but Pender does a good job of getting money from the citizens to use on economic development. And my thoughts were that maybe we could do that. And it wouldn't always come to council, or we have to approve that they take the money out of different funds that we're trying to spend money wisely out of. I thought it would be another source of revenue, but it hasn't necessarily worked out that way. So...
I think the key will be what's it gonna cost us to get the electrical side covered?
I don't think you'll get it covered myself, but...
And then we're gonna have to look for a contract and what's...
They're gonna have to have a contract, yeah.
And if that, you said, Jim, that you, your run's pretty high?
Well, if you go with NPPD, it does, or what?
You know, I, I don't know, Larry, because, uh, I've done a lot of that work. In, in PPD, we've used ferry. So if that swaps and they do a lot more work, yeah, your bill's gonna go up.
So you, you pay, are they like on retainer, or do you pay them on as needed basis when they show up?
As needed.
Okay, so it just depends on...
You know, when we had that outage Friday, right? They were working in the substation, so, and, and, uh, you know, they came in and, and we finally got to the point it's like, we gotta do this job and we gotta do it with the outage. And, uh, they got it done in what, an hour and six minutes, had the power back on? And they said, hey, we're gonna save you some money, we're going home, so... But, you know...
We're gonna have to make sure we get that covered.
You do under the contract, the issue is how much do you wanna use them?
Yeah.
Well, the other big issue is emergency situations. I don't know, unless we have somebody living in town that's here.
You know, if you have a storm, that's a whole different ballgame. If it's a simple, uh, outage for one reason or another, you know, it's typically handled. Klein or somebody else can do that work. Uh, but it just depends what it is. If you lose a transformer, of course, you gotta have a truck and a crew to, to, uh, to get the transformer down and get it wired up correctly, so...
What, what about the accident that occurred out here?
With Norman?
Yeah.
What did you have to do there?
Shut off the power, he, for, fell on his truck, you know? Yeah, he hit and broke the pole, so would kill the power line, so...
So who could do that in Wakefield? Nobody? Like Matt Westhouse or Kurt Thompson, any of them?
I don't think they would be interested in doing that. Question is, would you want those guys to use our bucket truck and stuff? Question is, would you want those guys to use our bucket truck and stuff or not, so?
Law ability wise?
Law ability wise, I.
And Jim, when you go up, why are you supposed to have somebody help you, but you usually do it yourself?
Once in a while, somebody will help me, but most of the time it's, it's by myself.
And isn't that dangerous, more dangerous to you?
It's always dangerous.
But is it our policy that we have to have to, or not?
Nah, I don't know if it's written anywhere, but it's, it's good to have somebody.
But you need someone that knows electricity too?
Or at least, uh, aware of where you're at and what you're doing, so.
Okay. Other questions of anyone?
Concerns? So we, we have to look in the possibility, Jim, of getting surprises to cover our electrical side, if you're equipped, what are options are out there?
Yeah.
Okay.
Mark doesn't have a lineman anymore, is that right?
I'll ask him, I'll ask him, you know, because he had, he had his son, what did Klein Underground, but they sold off to the people that did our trail, um.
Valley, Valcor?
Valcor, yeah.
And he's down by that.
So he works under them now. I don't know what Mark is capable of doing. I, I have to talk to him, so.
He used to have another lineman.
Yes, but I think he went with that.
Oh.
Underground group, you know. Not for sure, but I will ask.
Other questions of Nikki or Zach?
So you're gonna work on, he's working on, plan our options for electric, and you're gonna get the application to go there?
Yeah.
I'm, I'm, I wanna just sit and talk to you guys and see what, you know, what you wanna say, all the way around, you too, Nikki, just to see, you know? 'Cause we don't, we don't cut off any options. It might be, wait, down the road.
Well, you want, you mean you wanna talk tonight, or?
No!
First of all.
No, no, I'm done.
You know, I don't think anybody's opposed to anybody coming in and saying, sat down and going, hey, you know, what do you do from eight to five? Wow, you know, it changes every day. It really does.
And I, you know, and just personally say, what do you want going forward? What would be your ideal job, maybe, your, how do you wanna handle? I mean, maybe Zach will just say, I wanna be in there, and that's it, and that's okay.
You know, when I, when I, when I hired Zach, I said, I want to be, I want you to be a long-term employee and think about, you know, being in my position at some point in time, you know, so. That, that was always what I told him, and I thought he's capable of doing it, and, you know, you, you, you guys have to figure that out, but that's. I think you might need to have, uh, that advertisement in order to get a good mix and get a good feel for what's going on and what's available, and, uh, see how things are done, you know? Go to another community, you got, you got, uh, oh, you got Laurel Randolph, uh.
Laurel's a local, well, couple of years, you're economic development director, but.
Yeah.
And then Laurel, uh, Randolph, I talked to their new city administrator, I visited up there, and.
You got a lot of little communities our size that has city administrators. Some of them have consolidated, you know, clerk treasure administrators, some of them.
You talked to the Ponder administrator, she's running in about three different directions, because she's got all those titles and, I think, is it chief clerk? Administrator? Yeah, everything. And she says there's no way she can do all that. I mean, just flat out tells you, says impossible. I think Ponder, they're not gonna do anything else. It doesn't sound like she said it.
They, they've got a second person in the office.
Do they?
But, yeah, it's very slow getting in and down in Ponder.
But there are, um, yeah, I think, I think there's some things attractive about our community right now, I hope, and, uh, hope we can keep, find somebody that will take those positions, but it's not gonna, I don't think it's gonna be a cakewalk as far as finding the people to fill those positions.
If they're sitting open a long time, you need to get the ads out there.
Yeah, I've seen a lot of them sit, but, yeah, there's some of that, exactly.
Well, I, I won't be at the next meeting, but I'll, I'll zoom if somebody doesn't mind, or ready for me. Hey.
You, you.
If I don't zoom, then start praying.
Did you want, um?
Flowers, sure.
I wanna listen flowers for funerals, Bill. You know, they say in lieu of flowers, memorial for this, I was gonna say something ugly like that. Any, any other discussion today? Okay, I mean.
I made a motion to adjourn a while, but now.
Okay, let's go with that. We have another phone second. Scott? Mel?
Aye.
Larry?
Aye.
All right, thank you, guys.
Can I just say, guys, I've fallen asleep again, I'm sad.